Good evening and welcome to the Corder Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 22. Adam, would you please call it all?
Sure, Commissioner Metcalf. I think you're muted, but I see you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell? She's absent.
Okay, now that we know who's here, we open the meeting to a public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have a comment, you can write into publiccomment@tcmmail.org or raise your hand. And we'll check with Tracy here to see.
Thanks, Chair Chase. There were two emailed public comments that came in this afternoon and were forwarded to the commissioners this evening. They were not related to an item on the agenda. Those were also posted to our website, as is our current practice, so that members of the public could view those comments if they wish. I don't see any hands raised at this time. Just checking.
Typically, we can also, we can, we can communicate those if desired.
Yes, if you'd like them read, please.
Read, happy to do so.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't show them on my email inbox, so yes.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be happy to read those.
Thanks, Adam.
First one is from Allison Jones, and it was received today at 3:17 PM. "Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to have my voice heard. I recently became aware of the selection of the site of the, at the former Daphne Funeral Home and adjacent parking lot at 601 Tamalpais to be included as a potential site for housing development to meet the town's commitment to the state and A-BAG. There are a number of reasons that I and others in our neighborhood object to its inclusion. We look forward to meeting with Adam Wolfe to discuss it next week. The primary objection is that this site does not meet a number of your stated objectives for site selection in your planning framework. The first concern is regarding traffic through residential streets. Your planning framework states that you intend to limit vehicular traffic through residential streets. You have identified Meadow Suite as a residential corridor, when in fact it is a low-density residential neighborhood and part of the Chapman Park community. The road is a narrow one, one-way at our end, endangering anyone getting into or out of a parked car whenever there is traffic passing. It is also narrower than a standard street at the side of the parking lot, where additional traffic would be generated. Over the years, we have called out to the town that the traffic coming off of Tamalpais onto Meadow Suite is a danger to children and seniors living on our street. The town's traffic mitigation solution of blocking off the left, sorry, blocking off the turn lane at the Bank of America to limit traffic coming off of Meadow Suite has simply caused other issues, including people using Peds as a roundabout, which will be magnified by adding 10 units to this already impacted area. The second concern is that you intend to minimize physical impacts to existing residences. The addition of a multi-story housing on this narrow street is most certainly a negative physical impact on the homeowners, sorry, on the, on the homeowners living here. Building residential on top of parking or retail almost certainly means three-story buildings in close proximity to existing homes and causing privacy concerns, at a minimum creating a wall of building material where there are currently tree and in some cases, mountain views. Their concern is that you indicated that optimal sites were to be identified with a parcel size of .5 acres to 10 acres. By your own measurement, this is .47 acres and split by a street, making this an impractical location for a minimum of 10 units. We are continuing to gather feedback, but I wanted to go on record tonight as a vocal opponent of this site for rezoning to accommodate a currently proposed 10-unit development."
Thank you.
The second email is from Melissa Duggan, was sent at 4:29 PM today. "Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns regarding the Housing Element Plan. My name is Melissa Duggan, a Chapman Park homeowner of a single-family home on 600, on the 600 block of Meadow Suite Drive. I would like to voice my concern and objection to including in the Housing Element Plan, 601 Tamalpais as an opportunity site for potential development and rezoning to increase density that could allow 10 dwelling units to be built in that parcel. This inclusion ignores some of the town's own parcel selection criteria for the Housing Element Plan. One criteria was to minimize physical impacts to existing residences and locate outside of established residential neighborhoods. Our block of Meadow Suite Drive is zoned as low-density residential. This is the only parcel being considered that has front-facing, single-family residences within 22, 28 and 1/2 feet of the parcel. Indicating the 601 Tamalpais parcel as a neighborhood corridor, it completely ignores the tremendous impact it would have on immediately adjacent, front-facing, single-family neighborhood. We are not a corridor. We are seniors, young families, working families, homeowners in Corder Madera. The second criteria was to limit vehicular traffic through local residents' residential streets. This block of Meadow Suite Drive has 10 single-family residences on, as mentioned earlier, a narrow, substandard width of road. Part of the street in question is a single lane, one-way only, with high-speed traffic coming off of Tamalpais Drive, and has been brought to the attention of the town several times prior as a traffic safety hazard. The closing of egress off of Meadow Suite at Sanford has created additional unintended traffic impacts at the corner of Meadow Suite at Lakeside Drive, with increased commercial and personal vehicles turning around further east on Meadow Suite and trying to egress to Tamalpais at Lakeside instead of driving all the way down and looping around and back up to Casa Buena exit, to the Casa Buena exit. Multiple near accidents and pedestrian safety have been impacted by this additional burden to a small street, adding additional residences, and the accompanying traffic will only compound the problem and further impact public safety. The third criteria has to do with your designated parcel size. The parcel is not within 1 half acre to 10 acre criteria. This is .47 acres and is bisected by Lakeside Drive as two small parcels. You're using a split parcel to achieve a parcel size that you now want to rezone to increase density. This divides all stated criteria. We are a united group of homeowners and residents in a wonderful neighborhood. We will be, we will be to sharing further our concerns and alternatives with Adam Wolfe in order to target these 10 dwelling units to a more appropriate parcel. Thank you."
Okay, Melissa, thank you. All right, no other hands are raised at this time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then we will, all right, and no commentary or no chat. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment section of tonight's agenda, and we'll move on directly to the new hearing. So tonight is a hearing entitled 800 Corder Madera Avenue. This is a public hearing for the consideration and possible recommendation to the Corder Madera County Council to approve an annexation, pre-zoning, lot-line adjustment, general plan map and zoning map amendments, and CEQA exemption related to the reorganization to resolve a longstanding encroachment adjacent to the property at 800 Corder Madera Avenue in Corder Madera. So that's a mouthful, but it is now either Adam or Mr. Kenning who will take the ball and run with it.
Yes, this is going to be, Phil and Sean will be hosting this or be providing the staff presentation this evening.
Great.
Yeah, I'll just briefly start out, Commissioner Chase and members of the planning commission. I just wanted to check that everyone received the email that I sent at about 6:35 with the revised resolution, which is created by Ann Danforth, and also a zoning ordinance, a draft zoning ordinance for the zoning map change. Did everybody receive that? That email with the two?
To make sure that Tracy has also received this or not. Tracy, can you come in? Otherwise, I'll.
If you can forward it to me, I can put that out there.
Yeah, I can forward it to Tracy. Yeah.
I'll, I'll do so, Phil. Don't worry.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And, and with that, and I think there'll be, there'll be an opportunity, what I'm proposing is, is Sean can give his introductory brief PowerPoint of the project, and then perhaps Ann can give an overview of, of the revisions that took place at the 11th hour. And will there be any questions that the commissioner public has? So with that, I will turn.
Thank you, Phil, Chair Chase, members of the commission. I'm Sean Kennings, L.A.K. Associates. Share my screen. Everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, so here we are. This is an application for 800 Corder Madera Avenue for a lot-line adjustment and pre-zoning. It includes the annexation and a general plan and zoning map amendment, as well as a CEQA exemption. The specific action is an application for a lot-line adjustment and the pre-zoning to combine parent parcel 800 Corder Madera Avenue, which is in the town of Corder Madera, and approximately 21,860 square feet of land in the Alto Open Space Bowl, known as the Encroachment Area, which is owned by the Marin Open Space District, which is in the city of Mill Valley. So tonight's meeting is to receive all the information related to the development and make your determination regarding the resolution. Per the resolution, again, it is, it is specifically for the lot-line zoning, lot-line adjustment and the pre-zoning, but is, is consistent with and part of the annexation. And it also includes the general plan and zoning map amendments, recommendations, and a CEQA exemption, 15301 for existing facilities. Real briefly, 800 Corder Madera Avenue is a very large parcel, about 10 acres at the top of Corder Madera Avenue, right at the border between Corder Madera and Mill Valley. As you can see here, the yellow line indicates 800 Corder Madera Avenue. The blue line includes the, the portion we call the Encroachment Area. Mill Valley is to the south, Corder Madera is to the north. You can see the town boundary line is effectively a straight line across. 800 Corder Madera carries an open residential general plan designation and an R1C open residential district. Zoning designations for large residential parcels. The Encroachment Area is, is right now currently open space and open area in the city of Mill Valley. A little bit of background, the previous owner, a previous owner, I think it's been over 20 years, possibly 30 years, built a basketball court, retaining walls, and associated landscaping on the 21,000 square feet within the Marin County Open Space District property in the city of Mill Valley boundaries. It is fenced and only accessible through the 800 Corder Madera property. There's been a code enforcement or abatement or an action against the property for quite some time. So previous owners and current owners in 2019 entered into a transfer agreement with the Open Space District. That, that agreement included a sale of the portion for fair market value from the Open Space District to the 800 Corder Madera property owner, in addition to a payment of $250,000 to the district to, for sort of open space management, fire fuel management, helping out with the Open Space District. Last year, the district engaged LAFCO, the Marin Local Agency Formation Commission, to annex the property, which what they call is a reorganization, essentially reorganizing property from the city of Mill Valley into the town of Corder Madera. LAFCO has the, the ability, the mandate to do this annexation per California government code. But in order for them to finalize the annexation, they need clearance from the town for the lot-line adjustment, the pre-zoning, which is effectively the town designating a zoning district for that area, and a environmental determination pursuant to CEQA. So the application for the lot-line adjustment was filed last summer. Subsequently, the tax-sharing agreement was approved by the city of Mill Valley in December of last year, and was approved by the town of Corder Madera in February of this year. That's to reorganize the, the property with relation to the district, sanitary district, the town, and the city of Mill Valley. The lot-line adjustment, again, combines the two areas in one primary parcel. The pre-zoning designates the Encroachment Area as the R1C open residential district. And then subsequent or following the the approval and the annexation, then the zoning and general plan maps will get adjusted and approved to have a singular boundary and create consistency, vertical consistency between the two zoning and general plan designations. And lastly, again, the project is exempt from CEQA. It's effectively in existing facilities. These improvements have been there for quite, quite some time. And the, the project in front of you is the lot-line adjustment. So there is no, there is no physical site disturbance. There is no development. There is no action that requires new services or anything like that. So the CEQA exemption, 15301 for existing facilities is the, is the determination. Really quickly, here's the property. There's the existing single-family home at the top of the ridge. And you can see here the improvements. There's a basketball court, some landscaping, retaining walls, some vegetable garden beds, and some other site improvements. It's, it's a little more clear in this lot-line adjustment diagram that's in the staff report. You can see the boundary between Corder Madera and Mill Valley. It's essentially a straight line. But you can see the, the encroachment area itself is a, is a funny shape, but it runs sort of the, the extent of what improvements are there today, capturing fencing, planer beds, the basketball court, and the retaining walls. Effectively, the new town boundary and the new zoning would, would make the shape just look like this, just captures that portion of, of the property into the, into the town. It's in the staff report, and similarly, the general plan designation is is a similar shape. So instead of that straight, straight city lines, town boundary, it's, it's kind of a funny shape now. As, as we already discussed, there are some topic points that I think Ann is going to go over. But effectively, the, the annexation has already been approved by LAFCO. They had their meeting in February of this year. It was approved by their, by their board. In order for that to take effect, the town has to go through procedures, which is approving the lot-line adjustment, approving the pre-zone to designated R1C, and then also approve the CEQA exemption. Once those actions are complete, then the zoning and general plan, the zoning effectively becomes automatic once the annexation is confirmed. And then the town just has to amend the zoning map and the general plan map to make those things consistent. So procedurally, and I think Ann will discuss a little bit about that, and I also know that the applicant wants to talk about that. But this is step one. The planning commissions to, to review the project here, the testimony. And your options are to approve Resolution 22009, and I believe there's also an ordinance that goes with it. That's, that's an addition today. But the resolution recommending the town approve, town council approve the annexation, lot-line adjustment, pre-zoning, general plan amendment, map amendment, and the CEQA exemption. Or number two, approve Resolution 22009 as an option one with revisions to the conditions or further recommendations to the county council. Or option three, request more information and continue the hearing. I, I believe in Adam and Phil, the staff's position is that you choose number two because we have some revisions that need to go with it. That's my presentation. I'm open for questions. But I believe, again, Ann is going to supplement my discussion.
All right, commissioners. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kenning? I'll start with you, Mr. Rizzo.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? No. Okay. Dr. Bundy?
I just, a couple of questions. Is there any liability on the part of the town of Corder Madera in relationship to retaining wall failure or runoff issues from this property causing erosion on the open space district?
I can answer that if you'd like, and I would say the answer is no. If there is any liability that arises, it would rest with the property owner, not with the town.
Okay. It was also mentioned that it needs to come into sanitary district two. Is there a lateral line going to the property? Is there facilities, bathroom on this encroachment area?
No improvements. No, no utility improvements for sanitary.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. So at this point, then, I guess it becomes Ann, your address of us with various issues.
Just a couple of items. The attorney for the applicant raised a few issues in a letter that you all received mid-afternoon today. I received it at the same time. And after speaking with, with Phil and Adam, we decided that there were a couple of adjustments that we should make. One is fair, pretty simple, which is although we've been using the term annexation in connection with all of these approvals that are going to be coming before the council, the fact of the matter is that the town does not approve the annexation. That's done by LAFCO. LAFCO has already done that conditional upon the town taking the actions that are before you tonight. So we've dropped the word annexation from the list of items that are, that are in front of the commission this evening. The second was a question about the amendment of the zoning map. And I realized in dealing with that question that there was some confusion about what the nature of the pre-zone was. And in cases like this, when you're putting a new designation on a piece of property, you're basically amending the map to say, we are now extending this pre-existing designation onto this piece of property where it was not before. So we added an ordinance explicitly amending the zoning map because to amend the zoning map, you have to adopt an ordinance. And lastly, there was a typo of some, in the language with the CEQA findings, rather than describing the CEQA exemption, so I merely corrected that typo. If you have any questions about specific changes that I made to the documents, happy to answer them.
Thank you. That does seem fairly straightforward. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions about this?
No.
Okay. Phyllis, do you have any questions about this? No?
No.
And Mr. Rizzo?
I do not.
Okay. So then, at this point, is there a further presentation of this item from the owner or anybody else that wants to address us?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
My name is Scott Huxrasser. I'm a land use planner and a consultant for the property and working. I think ultimately, the goal of these is very forward, and I think we all share the, where we're going. But surprising, yeah. We did raise several issues in a letter earlier today, and I apologize for the lateness of the letter and the details. And as your legal counsel indicated, we have had a discussion about those questions and issues. The resolution's been modified to our satisfaction. And at this point, we'd like the commission to move the staff recommendation and adopt the revised resolution and the draft ordinance, and we'll move forward to the town council. And I wanted to, again, thank the staff for for their tremendous efforts to, to keep this moving forward. And I apologize again for the late response.
Okay, yeah, your audio is spotty, but I think we caught the gist of everything that you were saying. So at this point, we have before us, I think, all of what we need to hear. And I'm going to go to the commissioners to comment on this. I'll start with you, Commissioner Rizzo.
You know, I, I don't really have that much to say about it. I, I wish that some of this stuff would get resolved when properties are changing hands, because if the new property owner is third down the line, they really don't. They didn't really cause the damage. You know, so at this point, if, if, if the county wants to sell off that land, I, you know, unfortunately, you know, it's, it's open space and community space. But I understand that at, at this point, it sounds like the town and the county, you know, want to move forward with this transaction, so I don't have any further comment.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Metcalf?
I mean, this is pretty much a fait accompli. I think it's a good example of something, Peter, you and I checked out the number of encroachments that exist in Corder Madera on the public property right away that people are not being responsible for. So I'm glad to see that someone's going to have to pay for the property. And I guess that $250,000 is kind of like a fine, so I'm all for it.
Yeah. Heard. Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Seems incredibly complicated, but seems like it's worked out, so I have no questions and support this.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're at a point where it's been in place long enough that remediating this problem by abating it would be out of the question. So it's too bad that it couldn't revert back to the open space. But it's water over the dam, so to speak, for a lot of reasons. And it, it sounds like the property owners pushed forward with this to resolve it at the very highest level, so I think we're here as a stamp of approval for this, more or less. And I have no objection to it at this point. It seems like this is what we need to do. So as Sean pointed out, we're really at option number two here with this, with the revised resolution. So does somebody want to make a motion for that?
Excuse me.
We have, we have to.
Yes, thank you.
Forgot about that. This is an open time. So with that said, we have a number of participants out there, attendees, and if anybody wants to make a public comment, we're opening public comment for this. You can raise your hand or write into publiccomment@tcmail.org.
Thanks, Chair Chase. Don't see any emails. And I don't see any attendees' hands raised at the moment.
Yeah, so at this point, then, we will close the public comment section for this item and move it back to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the revised Resolution 22-009, which includes the lot-line adjustment, the pre-zoning, the general plan amendment, and the CEQA exemption.
Is that title enough for you, Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Well said, then. All right. Is there a second for this item?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Metcalf?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, off to the town council with this item, then. All right, so we're through the new hearing. And we go to a business item right now, which is discussion, a discussion. And we go to a business item right now, which is discussion, a discussion of existing and potential changes to the town's inclusionary zoning ordinance policies affecting new housing development in Corte Madera. So that's not nearly the mouthful of previous item, but it is certainly very important to talk about.
Yes. So I will, I will start us off. Adam and I are going to be tag teaming this presentation. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. And I'd like to kind of start off by saying, we kind of intend this to be kind of more of a workshop format. And we'll be stopping for comments and questions from the commission along the way. So we're interested in in hearing your thoughts. And really, the purpose of tonight's meeting and this discussion item is to hear the commission's feedback and comments, and also to answer any questions that the commission may have about the town's existing inclusionary zoning ordinance in preparation of a future ordinance amendment. And we thought it was important to provide the commission with the opportunity to ask questions and become familiar with the policies in the existing ordinance prior to bringing a draft ordinance amendment for the planning commission's consideration. And the planning commission ultimately will be reviewing a draft ordinance amendment and making a recommendation to the town council. So inclusionary zoning includes policies and practices that mandate or provide incentives for the inclusion of affordable units in new housing development. And it is a tool that can increase the supply of affordable housing. And as such, many California communities have adopted inclusionary zoning ordinances. There are a variety of policy considerations when developing a new ordinance or making changes to an existing ordinance. And it includes such things as the percentage of affordable units that should be required for a project, the minimum project size threshold subject to an ordinance, affordability targets, and also any alternative means of compliance that can be provided. And inclusionary zoning importantly needs to strike a balance between, you know, facilitating construction of new affordable housing, but not unduly impacting overall housing production. You know, if if an ordinance has requirements that are are too challenging to meet, then it essentially could incentivize housing development altogether. So really, the goal is finding a balance that promotes new residential construction and which will ultimately achieve the development of affordable housing in a community. The town's current housing element, which was adopted in 2015, includes several policies related to the town's inclusionary housing. And the housing element is an eight-year, covers an eight-year planning period and includes a variety of housing goals and policies. And there is a program in our current housing element to monitor the affordable housing ordinance and also to evaluate if any requirements should be adjusted. And the purpose of this implementation program is again to ensure that our policy is achieving the desired purpose, which is obviously the development of affordable units and preferably onsite affordable units. As the commission is well aware, we've had several discussions related to the Senate bill grant. The town did receive funds in 2019 to work on several projects collaboratively with other Marin County jurisdictions. And this included the objective design and development standards project, the development of an accessory dwelling unit workbook and website, and also this inclusionary zoning study. Projects one and two have since been completed. And obviously, this evening, we are discussing project three, which is the inclusionary zoning study. And as part of this study, the consultants determined both that the calculation of its housing in lieu fee and also of a commercial linkage fee. And at this point, we're moving forward with the inclusionary piece, and the commercial linkage fee will follow most likely in 2023. Corte Madera, we've been working jointly with six other Marin County jurisdictions. All of the jurisdictions have existing inclusionary zoning with the exception of Fairfax and San Anselmo. And over the course of this project, Adam and I have met several times with staff from other jurisdictions. And the consultant team has also had several forums with the development community to discuss many of the policies. And the consultants will be meeting for a third time at the end of the month with several Marin County developers. To provide a bit of background on our existing ordinance, the town's existing ordinance was adopted in, or the existing requirements were adopted in 2020 to 2003 and are codified within the zoning ordinance in Title 18. And our existing ordinance requires a percentage affordability of 25%. So essentially, that means 25% of the units need to be set aside for affordable, affordable households. So a project that is 100 units, 25 of those units would need to be affordable units. And our minimum project size size is one unit. So essentially, it applies to all new single-family residential developments in Corte Madera, including a single-family home constructed on a property. The existing affordability targets are 5% for very low-income households, 10% for low-income households, and 10% for moderate income households. And our existing inclusionary ordinance does include an alternative means of compliance. The projects that are smaller and are less than 10 units have two options. They can either provide one affordable unit for a low-income household, or they can pay an in lieu fee. And the in lieu fee in the ordinance is based on both construction costs and area median income. This shows some of the recent development of affordable housing in Corte Madera in recent years. Most recently, the preserves at Robin Drive, which was approved in 2019, includes 16 market rate units and eight accessory dwelling units. And the eight accessory dwelling units were, are not deed restricted. Affordable units are typically deed restricted for 55 years. And in this case, the ADUs are not deed restricted. So this was kind of an alternative means of compliance with the ordinance. The in lieu fee that was calculated for the preserves at Robin Drive was $0. And this was based on a project of 8/9ths of a unit. And this kind of underscores one of the, the reason we need to move forward with the ordinance amendment. Our existing in lieu fee is calculated based on the cost of construction and the area median income. And construction costs have not been updated in many years. And the current construction costs are assumed to be $125 a square feet. This is obviously grossly below market value. And so it's resulted in the in lieu fee, you know, essentially being being $0 for in current, current year. 516 and 502 Chapman, those were both new single-family homes. They were approved in 2016, and they paid the in lieu fee. And it was based on 1/9th of a unit, and the fee that was collected was just over $3,000. And the enclave development, which was approved in 2015, includes 13 market rate units, of which one, of which they have three additional units that are affordable. One is very low, one is low, and one is moderate. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the the in lieu fee. This shows an example of the in lieu fees that were collected for the two new homes on Chapman. And the town's in lieu fee is based on the cost of constructing an affordable unit, which is demonstrated in letter A, and then what a low-income family of three can afford to pay. So the size of the unit is assumed to be 1,500 square feet. And then the cost of, the cost of construction is $125 a square feet. So that results in a cost of just over $187,000. And then B is what a family of three, a low-income family of three can afford to pay. So it's based on the median income. And in 2017, that was just under $97,000. So when you subtract B from A, you end up with, in this case, it was approximately $30,000. And that is the cost for nine units. So in this project, it was just a one-unit development. So you essentially take that cost and multiply it by point 11, point 11. And now, in this case, this is the Robin Drive project. And you can see, A remains the same, but the cost is still $125 per square foot. But what's changed in this case is the median income has gone up $134,000. So it's, when one, A is not changing, but B is increasing. So it results in B actually being more than A, and there's no, when you subtract the two, obviously, the result is zero. So this really underscores one of the reasons the in lieu fee needs to be updated in for our ordinance. The purpose of the in lieu fee is essentially to to provide affordable units and to be the cost of what it would be to construct an affordable unit. Not, obviously, our current ordinance is not achieving that. So I'd like to pause here to see if the commission has any questions on anything related to the existing ordinance.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah. Looking at affordability, the enclave, is that market rate, but then the three, very low, low, and moderate? Are those deed restriction going forward for 55 years, as you mentioned?
Yes, they're deed restricted for 55 years, and this obviously was a forced sale product. And at a later slide, we will show what those three units were sold for, based on the three different income categories.
And for Tam Ridge, I think the affordable was 10% or 18 units, as opposed to the 25 that we actually had designated. How was that worked out?
It's my understanding it was an agreement with the town and the developer. I don't know all the kind of the ins and outs of it. Adam may be able to provide some more context, but it was 10% was what was required for that project. And obviously, it doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Yeah, there was a, there was essentially a special overlay district that was created by ordinance for that development that only obligated the owner to construct 10% of the units as affordable units. And and then exempted the project from the regulations that Martha's been discussing at this point, you know, through this, these slides. So it wasn't subject to our normal, well, the the ordinance that Martha's describing now. It was sort of a special ordinance through the overlay district that was actually created for that project.
Yeah.
And, go ahead.
I was going to say, now that that property has changed hands, it's now Bell Mount Tam, they have to comply with those original agreements?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I got, I got a question. So the, so the current, the current affordably, affordable target for less than 10, what do you do, what is, I mean, I don't know if any projects ever come across the, you know, the table, but we've got, you know, if it, if you got 10 units and 5% of them need to be very low, would the developer just pay an in lieu fee if they wanted to develop 10%, 10%? Because you can't really build a half a unit, right? So.
Yeah, if it came in at 10 units are required to provide, to build units onsite. So there's not an option to pay any in lieu fees. You know, in the, in the case of the enclave, you know, that was the, three, three of the units were affordable, and they provided one at very low, one at low, and one in moderate. So it wasn't, you know, it didn't quite meet the five, 10, and 10. So if someone came in at the 10 units, that, you know, as part of the evaluation of the ordinance, they would be broken into the three different income categories.
I think, I think that it's, it's, it would be, I think, Jim, you're asking what that half unit, it's clear that you're going to have to build essentially two and a half units, but 25% of the 10 units would be one low, one moderate. And then I guess it's the half percent. I forget, I think there are provisions in our code as to what to do with that half unit, but I can't recall them off, offhand. I can look, unless Martha, do you, do you know how you would handle that specific situation?
Offhand, I don't.
Okay. I can, I can take a look, but.
I was just wondering if you would build the two units and then pay a fee for the 5%? Or where you would have to pay the three, like most codes, you kind of bump it up?
Yeah, exactly. I think that's, that's what I would assume, it gets bumped up. But I, I didn't want to speak offhand without actually confirming it. But there is no option for the in lieu, once you're above 10 in our, the town's current ordinance. Let's see.
And there, there are some policies that do, if you have a half unit, allow you to pay an in lieu fee for that half unit. I know the unincorporated, their inclusionary ordinance includes that, that you can pay an in lieu fee for, you know, if you don't.
I guess what I'm saying, so there might be an opportunity to mix up actually giving units and then paying, paying in lieu if, if giving flexibility to developer, you know, based on the size of the land, because obviously, we don't have a ton of property to apply some of these ordinance to that, that meet all the criteria.
So it's, just to get back to Commissioner Rizzo, it says 1824-120, paragraph B. Sorry, that was the citation in the municipal code. Projects that include 10 or more total dwelling units shall, and I think this is one of your attachments, shall provide the following affordable housing. In lieu fee contributions to the affordable housing fund are not allowed as a substitute for providing dwelling units. If the results of the following calculations are less than 0.5, the number shall be rounded off to the next lower number. And if the results are 0.5 or greater, the number shall be rounded off to the next higher number. So you would be into a, essentially a third affordable unit. So essentially, a 10-unit project, you'd be required to provide 30% of your unit sets affordable.
And my, my second question is just, I was just wondering why the two single-family houses on Chapman were required to meet any of the inclusionary housing requirements? Is that, were they zoned something else?
They were zoned, you know, single families. Our existing ordinance has a minimum project size of one unit. Essentially, any new residential unit needs to comply with the, the, the ordinance. In, historically, we have not applied this requirement if a project consists of a demolition and a rebuild, or a substantial demolition and rebuild. That is something we're looking to add clarity into the ordinance amendment.
So what does that mean? If you have an empty lot?
And you build a house, you would pay the in lieu fee.
You'd pay the in lieu fee for not developing an affordable unit?
And you, obviously, the current in lieu fee is, was zero, but in 2016, when those projects were approved, it was still very low. Something we'll get, be getting into a little bit later is the in lieu fee that was calculated is much higher than what is currently in our, in our ordinance. So that does, you know, raise some, some questions.
And, and would that be like a percentage of the, of like, let's just say you're building a thousand-square-foot house? It would be a percentage of that thousand square feet would be your requirement?
It's based on the, the unit. So if it's a new unit, it's, it's based on, it, it depends on what we do with the affordability requirement. But our current ordinance, you would pay, you pay basically 1/9th of a housing unit for the new unit. So whatever the in lieu fee is, you pay 11% of that.
Okay, got it. And my last question, I'm sorry, I got a lot of questions on this one. The, does the town own any, any, any local, low, lower, I should say, affordable housing that some of the fees could be applied to? Or are we thinking more of a, more of a fund where we get, we grant it out to, to people that, that are in developments that might need to be subsidized?
The, the only property the town currently owns is the Park Madera Shopping Center. We don't own any, or we own another small parcel near the Paradise Shopping Center. We don't own any or we own another small parcel near the Paradise Shopping Center area. And that is something that our ordinance update will include is kind of some additional options of how to use this money that we collect. I don't know if you want to add.
Yeah, just just some context on that. And and you know, there is, the town doesn't own any of the affordable deed restricted units in that are currently exist in town today. But yeah, the fee, so the fees are collected. We it goes both the fees from what Martha's describing here, which is the residential development in lieu fees. We also have commercial in lieu fees. Those both those funds get put into what's called the Affordable Housing Fund. That fund, which currently has about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. And it's, you know, I think it's been used in the past, but currently has five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. By ordinance, today can only be used for new construction of affordable housing. And so one of the things that we're thinking of exploring and and certainly want to discuss this with our with Ann as we go before prior to coming back with an ordinance is whether or not we can expand sort of the potential opportunities for use using that fund for things like preservation or other of affordable existing affordable housing or or other uses precisely. Because, you know, it if the low amounts of funds that we at least currently have, it it's you need either a project to either help subsidize gap financing or something like that for an affordable housing project, which, you know, are few and far between, at least currently in Corte Madera. Or, you know, you really can't really build anything new construction wise for that amount of money. So it may make sense to consider some potential other options. But I do want to make sure that we are in strong legal footing if we are opening that up for other options. And so that's still an open question, but it's it's an important one.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, anyone else have any questions at this point for Martha? No, okay. Oh, Phyllis?
Yeah, actually, it's for Adam. I'd like him to follow up on what he was just explaining. When you say used for construction, some examples of that and then some examples of what expanded uses would be.
Okay, yeah, so I think the and I don't have all the history here. But I believe, for example, the town did contribute funds from the Affordable Housing Fund that existed at the time to the development of the San Clemente Place Apartments. And so that helped cover sort of the gap financing. But it specifically was for the construction of new housing units that were affordable, right? So the potential other options which don't exist now in our code. Our code is very specific about what the funds can be used for. A potential other options that I've had discussions with some other some of my colleagues and others I've seen have expanded the opportunities for using the Affordable Housing Funds that are collected through in lieu fees for other other things that are intended to accomplish the same goal. So one example, and I'll just totally an example of I can think of is is preservation of affordable housing units that potentially are expiring out of their deed restrictions, which, believe it or not, some in Corte Madera, some of the ones that were originally first built in the nineties were coming up on the original terms were thirty five years. We do fifty five years now. So there's there, that's one option that I think is a legitimate purpose, consistent with what the in lieu fees are for. But, you know, it 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 does get into sort of a question of whether we could use it for that purpose if we expanded the opportunities. And then, you know, I I think, are there direct subsidies that a program, you know, programs that would also fund affordable housing in Corte Madera rather than construction of it? Potentially, you know, I don't, there's other options and it, you know, we could bring some more of those, some things that we've seen other. I don't want to say other communities doing it. They they it could, you know, there's importantly, I think a lot of it depends on the source of the funds. And that's what we have to pay attention to and what they're used for. So but that's just one example. How about that preservation of affordable using units?
I got one more question before you move on, if unless I'll overturn my my turn again. If Commissioner Bundy has something.
No.
I was just wondering, so going back to the single family model. So i- if someone was was had a had a lot that they were building and they did it in ADU and they and they did it. They they went ahead and did it, did put a deed restriction on it. Would would that cover, would that be something that you guys would consider in the new ordinance as as covering the inclusionary restriction? Because obviously, you wouldn't be able to do a low and a medium and a and a high because it's one house.
That is something we we've talked about as a potential alternative compliance option in in the updated ordinance is allowing for an accessory dwelling unit to be built in conjunction with a single family home to satisfy the requirement.
It it and even beyond that, I think it's fair to say that that Martha and I also are just, you'll we'll go through it in a in a slide in a minute. But we're one of the few jurisdictions currently that actually require an in lieu fee for one unit, like a new single family home. So there's some, we we're we're sort of, that's a decision point that we need to make as a town and as a community of whether that we're going to continue to do that moving forward. Interestingly enough, actually, the some of the other jurisdictions want to move that direction that we've been speaking to and and actually require more come toward Corte Madera than our current ordinance. Rather than and, you know, sort of initially, when I first, you know, started working with this inclusionary, our existing inclusionary ordinance, maybe five, six years ago. My initial thought was that's that's weird to require an in lieu fee for a single family home for one unit. So I was sort of thinking going in the other direction. So we're sort of, it's we'd love to hear some your thoughts on that if you have any. By all means, that's that's going to be an interesting conversation, especially once you see what the new in lieu fees potentially would be. It's it would basically, it's pretty significant increase that we're going to be talking about in terms of the in lieu fee for one unit. And then obviously, for a single family home, it would be essentially, we'll talk, you know, about twenty percent of the entire fee amount for one unit. But still, it would be significant. And again, a lot of this is based, we did, we did hire the consultant as a group to sort of, they work on inclusionary housing ordinances throughout the state. We had some good conversations with them about what other jurisdictions do. How does this, you know, what works for Corte Madera and what works for Southern Marin versus Central Marin? And and Northern Marin didn't participate. But but we've had a lot of those conversations about how to do this. And it's a good segue, I think, into the next part of this. There's there's so many different aspects to the policy as we're touching upon now that you could really you you could tweak this thing in a number of different ways. And potentially, each one of those tweaks is a discussion in and of itself. And so we are trying to find this sweet spot, I think. We currently are not in the sweet spot. I think it's pretty clear that we're we're not getting the funds that really we should from market rate development to help, you know, offset some of the affordable housing needs. But in any case, there are a number of different ways you can peel this and slice it up. And what we wanted to focus on in the next section is is essentially like there's four or five main pieces to an inclusionary policy or ordinance that is universal throughout, you know, and you never an inclusionary housing ordinance. So gonna try to focus on those as just because they provide really the the framework or the backbone to this this policy or to any inclusionary housing policy. And then we can, I want to make sure that certainly the commission understands those aspects of it has questions. And then, again, they'll probably lead to sort of further tweaking or 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 further areas to explore, which will help us sort of craft something that tries to capture your thoughts and feedback. And and any members of the public as well, we'll turn this over to them at some point here, too. But we want to provide this base. So let's go to the next slide and and the first, oh. Yep, so the first.
Adam, before you go on, I'd like to say something, please.
Yes.
Your words have meaning, and I think it would be confusing to people, maybe really a problem, and would know better than I do. If somebody's building a single family dwelling, to say you want an in lieu of fee, you don't expect somebody building a single family dwelling to then build an affordable unit. I mean, maybe they'd have an ADU, but that's a choice. If you're gonna have a fee, and I'm, I have no problem with having a fee, to build up a fund, to call it an affordable housing fee, but have the name of the fee fit what it is. Because an in lieu of fee is only asking for trouble, I think, in the long run.
I think that's a great, that's a great point. I'm not, I have no idea why. I mean, I know why it's called that, but it doesn't speak to the purpose of it. So it it can be in lieu of what is is what you're saying, yeah.
Well, and also, somebody who objects to it could hire an attorney. That's quite prevalent in this country.
Well. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the good thing about this, I think the good, no, but the good thing about this is actually these these fees and the they've played out in the courts very recently, in fact. And so there is there is good cases to rely on at this point. It went back and forth for a while. Yeah.
A single unit? Yeah, I'm not talking about building, you know, a five unit, ten unit. Yeah, oh, well, it has to be a five to nine unit. I'm talking about a single family home. Someone purchases a lot and builds a house.
Yeah, the fee in general is is, but we don't need to get into specifics. And again, like I was saying, what we, that's a decision point with the update of this ordinance. If the if there's concern about requiring an affordable housing fee for the construction of one unit, that can be changed. That's the way our ordinance is currently written. There's nothing that says that the court, the future ordinance or the update has to also include that. But we're looking for, you know, if that's looking for feedback on that.
Well, I'm not objecting to having the fee, I'm objecting to.
One unit?
No, I'm objecting to what you call the fee.
Okay, all right. Affordable housing fee, I'll call it affordable housing fee from now on. But let's try to, let's try to get through the rest of this and then we can hear from members of the, you know, so. So one of the things that is sort of the first consideration is is how much, what is the requirement to essentially, how many of your units that you are building in your project have to be reserved or built for quote unquote affordable housing? And so Martha went through this and Corte Madera on the left hand side of the slide. You know, when you add up ours, we we require twenty five percent of the units that you build to be built for affordable housing, deed restricted affordable housing. And and for the moment, let's just, let's just think for ten units or larger, right? And because we're not dealing with an in with an affordable housing fee. We've included, so that's one of the key decision points. It's also one of the frankly, kind of the easiest to deal with because there's we can coordinate with other jurisdictions. Lots of cities do it differently. But one thing we know, and we can come back to this, you want, but Martha, maybe the, oh, is this the is is the twenty five percent, and we'll get into this in a little bit on the slides coming up. It's it's the high, isn't it the highest in the in the Bay Area?
It's the highest in the Bay Area. What's more typical is twenty percent or some are even as low as fifteen percent. So we do have the highest requirement requirement in all of the Bay Area.
All right.
Does it include San Francisco?
Yes. And we we have heard from several developers that our current requirement is out of line with other jurisdictions. And it essentially, you know, precludes housing development.
So in any case, you know, the the enclave notwithstanding, which was they were able to do that. This is a a high percentage that ultimately, you know, we may we may want to look at and lower. And that's certainly what the recommendations of our consultants made clear. It's that you gotta, you gotta bring down the twenty five percent. It's essentially an impediment to housing, which becomes problematic when we go through our housing element process as well and submit this to HCD, because that's exactly the type of thing they're going to look for in terms of being an obstacle or constraint to housing development. So that's that's percentage affordable. That's one concept of or one piece of an inclusionary housing ordinance. Next, any any questions on that or discussion or comments? Yeah.
Phyllis?
Yeah, good. Thanks. Thanks, Peter.
I would definitely suggest lowering it because I think when you have a figure like twenty five percent, you get into the position where developers will start negotiating the fee with you. And you'll find you end up with a lower fee than you would have if you had had a ceiling of twenty percent. I also like the idea that showed on the previous slide that depending upon the size of the development itself was the percentage. I thought that was a good idea. Because I think we have more places, I mean, not seeing in front of me now, so I'm telling them. We have more sites where you can build smaller units than we do much larger units. So I would want a fee for the smaller units, which might be more than the total fee percentage wise for the larger units.
Okay, yeah, and just remember, you know, we there's so those we'll get into the next next, there there may not be an option, and that's another, we'll we'll talk about this next, to actually require a fee. We're not going to allow people building a certain number of units to build to pay a fee. You just have to build the number of units in your project. So it becomes a mixed income project. Right now, that threshold, and we can go to the next, I think that's the next slide, isn't it not? Yeah, we, well, we've kind of been over this. But right now, you can, we you're only paying a fee. You only can pay a fee if you're between one and nine units in Corte Madera. Anything over ten, you got to build those. So that's going to be twenty percent of your total project size is or total units is going to go or twenty twenty five percent currently. We're considering going to twenty percent. The minimum project threshold size, so this is exactly, we've talked about this. One unit, that's we already know, you know, if anybody has more thoughts on that, we'd love to hear from you on that, whether that's appropriate. You can see some of the other cities where they are, again, most of them are not one unit. But actually, some of the policy discussions that we've had with other jurisdictions, especially with the county, they're they're looking to actually require an in lieu fee for or or even building the unit for for one unit projects. And then, again, we have, I'm not sure if this talks about the the same thing on the max, essentially, there's another project threshold size when you get to what I was just mentioning, above which you're required to build the units. So you can only pay for an in lieu fee for projects that contain one to nine units today in Corte Madera. And then if you're building a ten, ten unit or more project, then you're going to be required to build those units onsite. We can adjust that threshold and that as well. And currently, most of the jurisdictions, we are, we're thinking, some of us are a little bit And currently, most of the jurisdictions, we are, we're thinking, some of us are a little bit in different positions. Place like Santa Fel, you may have seen some headlines recently where they've actually, the funds that they collect. They've actually been able to spend those on affordable housing projects in Santa Fel. That are bill and being built by nonprofit developers. And so, but in any case, for us, we still think it's probably appropriate to have a. Projects above a certain size have to build those units onsite because of the lack of available land to really use that funding elsewhere in town. We were even considering bringing that threshold down from nine to maybe five or six. The thinking being that if we, you know, all of these things work together. And and maybe bring it up from one to two, you know, so you have. If you're building a five unit project, twenty percent of that's gonna be one unit, and so it's actually, you can actually. It's a whole number and maybe that's reasonable to actually build that onsite. Anyways, these are, this is another, again, the point today is not necessarily to. Determine the, what the actual policy should be, but make sure you understand these different concepts or pieces of the ordinance. So if there's any questions on that, let me know. The next. The next one is, alright. Gets more common, we're digging deeper, now that you know how many. Units you have to build in your project, twenty percent of your project. How do you actually, what level of affordability are those units going to be required to be? Be rented at, for example, or to be sold at. Corte Madera, you can see on our left, again, we're at twenty five percent today, five percent low, ten percent. Sorry, five percent very low, ten percent low and ten percent moderate income, and again, those are based on. Area median income, we'll provide a couple of examples shortly. But. Essentially, what. Level of affordability are you targeting? For those units that are required to be built onsite. And this is really important because it gets into that very, it's an economic. You want to find that sweet spot again, I think is really what's critical and make sure that. If we were to do twenty, twenty percent all at very low, that's a tremendous subsidy. That the developer is going to have to actually build into their project and it may preclude the development from actually happening in the first place. On the other hand, you want to get it just right, so you actually get. The deeper levels of affordability and the workforce housing that you're actually requiring, so. Does everybody sort of understand? The targets, affordable affordability targets, right now, I will just say, very low. Means that it's, it's affordable to somebody earning. No more than fifty percent of the area medi- median income, and I should say a household. Earning no more than fifty percent of the area median income, low income. Equates to a household. Earning no more than eighty percent of the area median income and moderate income. Is a household earning no more than hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Martha, anything to add here, or you want to, we can.
Yeah, I'll just mention that the area median incomes are provided, it's kind of per county, it varies and it's provided. By the, by the state, so those are predetermined.
Yep. Yes, Commissioner, oh, sorry, I'll let, I'll let Chairman Chase.
Oh, there you go, okay, I was writing something, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, in the next draft, it would be really nice to know what the last years. How these correlate to our, our incomes in Marin, because when, I think when you, when you really put them in the paper, you're gonna realize that. They're not so low. You know, for the developers to come up with a low and a moderate income. Unit is is not like anywhere else in the country because it's, because everybody makes a lot of money here, so. I think it'd be really important to maybe see just a stat on that on the next. On the next run, because I think that, you know, we're gonna start to see that it's not that big of a deal for them to come up with some of these units.
And actually, it is a slide that shows those, those income levels.
Yeah, so let's go to the next, let's go to the next one, this, this was helpful, our consultant did this graphic, just comparing us to other. Communities in Marin. On the X axis is really the percent onsite requirement of how many units you're required to build and. Affordable in your project, and you could see where the outlier at twenty five percent. Many are at twenty percent or lower and 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 to Phyllis's Commissioner Metcalfe's point, you know, there are different. Minimum thresholds in terms of. Like Larkspur requires fifteen percent for five to fourteen unit projects and then twenty percent for fifteen plus unit projects. So you can see we're over there and then on the average, on the left, the Y axis is sort of if you average the. All of the. Affordability levels together as part of that, you see what the average. Area median income, we call it the target actually is, and so if you average for Corte Madera, if you take our five percent. Very low or ten percent low and our ten percent moderate. That balances out to, we're really getting, saying you gotta build twenty five percent at an average of eighty five percent A M I. That, that clear? Okay, let's go to the next. And then, again, another layer here is you can split this between. Rental projects, if you're a rental project. It can have different affordability levels or different affordability targets. Versus for sale projects, and the reason of what you're, what we're seeing and what most ordinances now do besides ours. Is the for sale product, a lot of jurisdictions are moving away from requiring very low income. Units in the for sale. Essentially condominiums, because it can be actually difficult to qualify. One, for the loans at those very low incomes, two, there's oftentimes H O A fees. And and third, Marin Housing at least has found that there are higher default rates. On some of those. Very low income for sale projects, so a lot of times what you see is no low, very low income requirement for the. For sale projects. But for rentals, it's still possible, you can still do it for rentals. Sorry, I'm gonna, running out of battery again on my mic, so I'm gonna switch to my. Let's skip here.
And of the participating jurisdictions we're working with on this project. Three of them do have higher affordability targets for the for sale projects compared to the rental side of it.
Okay, thank you, hopefully you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the next one. And this is for for sale projects, we haven't changed, but you can see that some of the others have have actually changed on this graph, alright, let's go to the next one. Right, so this Commissioner Rizzo, this speaks to your point. In terms of the actual incomes we're talking about, when you talk about very low, low and moderate income. And and the different definitions or the different area median incomes that in the second column there that are actually the. The range that were each of those referred to, the definition, so. So yes, these are not like a low income unit for a four person household is is up to a hundred and forty six thousand dollars. That's A M I, we are, we are in the San Francisco. Marin Metropolitan Statistical Area, so it's a high income group there. And so all of these are clearly, obviously. Working, you know, working class. People who still need to, are, are, have good jobs and are still working to try to pay their, their household and obviously the whole. Their house, their, their housing costs, obviously, the whole point here is to ensure that those. Individuals and those households have a place to. Live in the community. Okay, I think we can go to the next one. So just as an example, this is actually twenty twenty one, this were, are the rents at Tam Ridge. At the different income limits. And I'll just say the. The moderate income, interestingly enough. The moderate income, there are two units at Tam Ridge that were moderate income, a hundred and twenty percent A M I, actually, they couldn't rent them. At a hundred and twenty percent A M I. Or or what they could charge at a hundred and twenty percent A M I, because they were basically. So close to the market rate rents. That nobody wanted to actually, well, one, nobody applied for them. And and two, nobody wanted to actually be, to do the paperwork and actually do, go through the regulatory process to be. Sort of every year, submit your income and be part of the program, so they actually lowered that rent to a hundred and ten percent A M I. And then that's what you see is the thirty three thousand six hundred and twenty nine. Actually, I think they may even come down to a hundred percent, so, so these are the rents for those various different. Very low, low and moderate income units at Tam Ridge. And this was the enclave, the sale prices for. And this is for the units at the enclave, these are actually where administered, we have an agreement with Marin Housing Association. I'm sorry, authority. Who administers our. Below market rate for sale. Projects in our program. And so these were the rates that Marin Housing are sort of the target A M Is that they actually. Price the units at for those for sale condos at, at the enclave. And the market rate for those was higher than that, right? The market, so the, yeah, these were deeply subsidized, the market, I mean, many of those units, I will say the units in that project were smaller. Affordable units were smaller and they were towards the front, they're the first building. Closest to Casa Buena. But units in that complex went for well over a million dollars. So if they go over, okay, never mind, we'll get to that later. Right, okay, so, and then, I think. Okay, and so I think we can go on to the. I think we've discussed some of this already, but. We did have a, our consultants and they focused actually heavily on this, what is an appropriate or what is an allowable? Defensible in lieu fee. That we could charge. For the various different housing products. That we've been talking about, the condos. Multi-family rental housing. Single family dwellings, if you wanted to talk about those. And those are the, the three different calculations that we, the consultants actually. Calculated. Go ahead, yeah. Alright, so, again, this is sort of where we are currently and you'll see what other cities actually charge, again, most of these cities currently do not. Have an in lieu fee for one unit, but they, most of them do start at about two, Larkspur does start at five, so just bear that in mind, again, these all sort of. Are connected in some way, but certainly you can see, Unincorporated Santa Fel, these are. Significantly larger in the fees for one unit of affordable housing, essentially, if you're not gonna build your affordable one unit. Then you're, you're subject to this, this fee. Or a percentage of this fee, if you're, you know, depending on how many units you're building. So. And and this is the maximum. Again, the affordability gap is what really is getting determined here. In terms of how much. Forgoing sort of a, the construction of that unit. Really is, is what somebody could pay. And what. The affordability gap is for each prototype, and so this is what, it was in the report that the consultants did. And you can see there, there, the rental gap is, is at the highest end. And then the single family and then down to the condominium townhome. Martha, if you want to add anything on that?
I'll just add that there's a lot of information in the draft, inclusionary study regarding fees and how they were calculated. And they did. Look at a variety of factors, they looked at recent projects that were developed and based on conversations with the development community. So the report does include a lot of detailed information on, on these various fees.
Martha, if you want to.
Yeah, so, so we essentially, we, we looked at the maximum fee. Based on. The affordability gap for two different examples, one is the for sale condominium product and then the other is. For the, the single family, so again, the, the fee, the maximum fee, for example, one, the for, for sale townhome was. Two hundred eighty eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And then that fee is for. For, you basically apply the inclusionary requirement to that total fee. So again, our current inclusionary requirement is twenty five percent, if we decrease that to twenty percent. Then that's what would be applied to this maximum in lieu fee, so the cost per unit of a townhome project. Would be fifty seven thousand seven hundred and thirty per unit, and then that. Fee is for each unit, so in this example, if it's a three unit for sale townhome project. Would pay a fee of a hundred and seventy three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Or alternatively, could opt to, to build an affordable unit on, onsite. And then example two is the single family residence, and as we previously discussed, the, the residents at the preserves, their. In lieu fee was zero dollars, you can see it's obviously a significant increase. The maximum in lieu fee is three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. And if you apply the twenty percent inclusionary requirement to that, then the fee is, is seventy five thousand, just over seventy five thousand dollars. So that would be a significant increase. To be existing in the fee, are there any questions about these two examples?
Could you back up a slide real quickly? Okay. Portability gap, for sale gap, got it, okay.
And essentially, they looked at the, the, the gap for the different income levels and then averaged. The very low, low income and moderate to come out with the average affordability gap, and then that was the. The maximum in lieu fee for each of these three prototypes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So again, this kind of, you know, segues into the discussion of what the, you know, the appropriate. Unit size for the ordinance. You know, one unit or should it be increased to two units? So that is something we're interested on hearing the, the commission's feedback on.
Go to the next, yeah, these are just showing. Where other cities currently are, you can see, our zero stands out. This is again for. For sale projects.
If they see the orange is the for sale, single family and then the. This next one is the.
Yeah, but. And those numbers are from the study, obviously, there, those are just the recommend, recommended max, and you can see where everybody else fits in and. Larkspur, Unincorporated, Marin, Santa Fel, and then. Novato in San Francisco, which were not part of our study, but nonetheless, I'm sorry, not part of our. Our. Group working on this. Together, but nonetheless, we're included in this graph, and the next one is for. Rental projects. Which can be even higher according to the study that we commissioned. At four hundred and twenty two thousand seven sixty, which you can see actually the. The relatively lower in terms of actually what people are charging. For those in the fees, and again, you can play with this, it comes down to just. What is that sweet spot where you can extract? That large amount, the, the most amount of the fee without precluding that project from actually being developed. Wherever, so it's sort of all of it now, and and again, the in lieu fee. Wherever, so it's sort of all of it now. And and again, the in lieu fee, I don't, I know we're spending a lot of time on it, but I think. I don't want to overemphasize it because. A lot of what we're trying to do is actually encourage the development um of. The housing within the projects that are being built. So the in lieu fee may come into play for a a handful of projects that are like between two and six units. Or one is, I mean, depending what we do with the one unit, but. Uh, one unit would obviously be a lot more. Um, but if we if we don't do one unit, it's really for small, same, small number of projects. But uh importantly, also potentially for uh any duplexes. For example, built pursuant to SB nine or something like that. Okay, next, we're we're, I know we're exhausting everybody here. This, I I don't even think we should get into this, but it it does get back to Commissioner Rizzo's question about. Maybe or somebody had a question about whether you could do an ADU. And that sort of. Offset the need to either pay a fee um. Or you can account um for one year project. And so we we thought, you know, there are. There are certainly are ways you can donate land um with big projects and with people who are doing large subdivisions that sometimes happens. I know that's happening in Peloton right now. Any, in any case, that's the other most common type of um alternative means is the donation of land. For affordable housing development. All right. Let's go, keep going to.
Yeah, and this this is, there's a, there always seems to be new uh state legislation in the housing arena. And there was a a recent uh bill that became effective on January first, twenty twenty-two, Assembly Bill six zero two. And this uh bill was adopted after the study was completed, and it it essentially requires that any impact fee. Study that's adopted after July first, twenty twenty-two. Has to either calculate a fee that's levied or imposed on a housing development project proportionally to the square footage of the unit. Which the the study we have done does not do that. Or it needs to make specified findings explaining why that's not appropriate metric. Um, so, you know, our goal is to adopt. The in lieu fee before July first, twenty twenty-two, and you know, that's. We think that the analysis of the study would be complex and challenging. Obviously, no prior studies have done this before, so. It's probably gonna be a learning curve to um. You know, determine what what exactly needs to be included in such a study. And. Because of that, the participating agencies are all moving forward to adopt a fee before July first. So the this does. Kind of put us on an accelerated schedule moving forward.
And that's based on the three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot uh fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that the fee amount would need to um. Be proportional to the the size of the the unit. And what that looks like, you know, we don't really have a good sense of that.
Yeah, it and and again, yeah, I mean, there's a lot more than just the the fee component, but that's. The state law actually forces the whole thing sort of forward um in this timeline. Um. But you know, I I and I want to reiterate, you know, this is something that um. We've been working on or or sort of in the background, sort of thinking this needs to be changed for many years. Um. The SB two funds, you know, obviously we went to the council, I think that was two thousand nineteen. And we put that on our work plan and said, look, we want grant funds to actually change our inclusionary ordinance. Because we know it's out of date and it needs to be updated. So we're moving forward with this. Um, ordinance update. Uh, we could got we got the the consultants on board to uh create the analysis that we needed. This is just sort of accelerating accelerating the tail end of this process. Um, but um it's one that I think we're we were on a sort of. Similar timeline anyways, to be honest, is is what we're hoping to do anyways, to try to get this done. Consistent with the housing element policies that are in our existing housing element and consistent with our. Grant funding um that we got in two thousand nineteen, and now this just is sort of like an accelerator a little bit for. The fee part of the ordinance at least. Um, and so then the next steps really. Um, this developer forum meeting uh which is taking place um. With our consultant team and other participating agencies. You know, we we are, we would like to come back to the planning commission on April twenty-sixth. With a draft of an ordinance, um hoping to, again, with the timeline of trying to get something adopted by July first. You know, hoping to get to the town council and in the meetings um in June at the latest.
So the uh report that's eighty some pages is really the basis for this uh discussion. That's not going to change any. From where it is now. The rec- the recommendation is not going to move at all.
Right. I think, yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah, we wanted to have that as background and and backup, you know, analysis and documentation for helping us with. Um, the analysis and do essentially help us try to find that sweet spot that we've been talking about because it's. Obviously, it's not something that. The staff, we currently have the ability to get into the economic analysis of a development project um. Without that support, so it was really important to have that documentation and we wanted to share that certainly with. With um um the commission and and members of the public as well before going into this process.
So the consultant team met with developers and so forth previously, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the one that you're proposing here is another continuation of that uh.
Yeah, so essentially, the the the. We're developing kind of a common policy amongst the different jurisdictions, and it's to discuss some of those. Common policy items with the the developers and to, you know, essentially take take the polls.
Yeah, and I think that's really important. You know, one of the things we're trying to really do is align some of our policies across. Several Marin County jurisdictions to the extent practicable, you know, in terms of those major, what's the right threshold for. Uh, twenty percent or twenty-five percent or fifteen, you know, um. In the fees, to a certain extent, again, that creates some level of. Some level of predictability is is what developers are after, you know, um. They're not going to be surprised by uh. These costs, um, you know, uh or or what have you. So there we're trying to get to some level of consistency amongst. Uh, the participating agencies um. Uh, and, you know, I I there certainly, as you drill down deeper into the ordinance, there's going to be a lot of variation, but at least some of the main. Aspects of um the ordinance, we'd like to try to align, and so that's. What I think the um. The next meeting is going to discuss some of these draft sort of real. Policy ideas that are coming out of this group work. Um, and discuss that with um development community and see what their, you know, what sort of feedback um is. They have on those.
Mr. Rizzo, yes.
So it's twenty percent, you're, the proposed draft is twenty percent of a project. So even to get to the three levels of income, you need a project that's at least fifteen units, correct? So anything below fifteen units, you're going to be paying a fee. Is is that, is that the case?
So, so, yeah, I think you're. I think there's a way to do it with even a five-unit project. Twenty percent of that's going to be one, right?
But then you wouldn't be able to hit the three marks, right?
Right, so what, one of the, and this is a little bit deeper in the weeds, but. One of the ideas is just to. Create one target income, no matter how you get there. We want to achieve, and right now, quarter of there is at eighty-five percent if you average everything out. Between our five percent. Very low, fi- uh ten percent low and ten percent moderate. That equals a targeted area median in- income of all the units of eighty-five percent AMI. So one potential option is just to do that for smaller unit projects, maybe, before you can get to the different income brackets. It's just say, you know, you're gonna have to. Um, do a target AMI of eighty-five percent for that one unit or make that eighty-five percent. And then at fifteen, you could actually require one of each. If you want to do that for rental or for for sale, we may not have very low anymore. So you're just gonna have low and moderate. So, yeah, it it it's um, but I think one of the goals as we see it as staffs is 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 to really. Um, try to. Build as many of the units onsite as possible. Within reason, you know, so. That would ar- that would argue for a lower. Threshold, at which point you are. Required to build them onsite. And how you, what that unit is in terms of its affordability. We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to sort of work on that because we obviously, yeah, you can't do three different types of units for that project.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, I just think that when you, once you get below fifteen units, you start, the developer really gets. Uh, you know, the the money, the the economy of scales is gets really tough for. For the numbers to make sense, especially if it's going to be on a deed restriction for fifty years. Um. I guess that's a, that's, that's, you know, a work cut out for you under fifteen, I think. But, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Is there, is there a, an um. An appetite to do maybe an impact fee that just covers? You know, permitting? Rather than. That 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 could be in that fund, that could be granted to developers that are doing projects or. It's. The 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 single-family one really sticks on me because it, you know, you had a a lot and you're getting an impact fee for. You're buying in on a single-family.
Yeah, I think it's.
You know, R one. Seems kind of uh like a lot of money to pay for a fee.
Yeah. Others, any others have any similar feelings?
Phyllis. Okay, Dr. Bob.
I think uh James has got some real concerns that I have is, is this really going to work? We. You know, accept these recommendations, but is it still going to pencil out? Is it still going to work? I think the idea of encouraging the, you know, any, any single-family homes that do get built, and there. Really aren't very many situations where that could happen uh to have an ADU. But uh not have a deed restricted. I think we could get some more housing out of that, just. Because uh people will be willing to create an ADU. Whether it's actually rented or not, you know, they may just use it as a, you know, guest quarters or office. But uh at least we would have that on the books and it potentially could be rented in the future.
That that seventy-five thousand dollar single-family residence fee seems like a a big hurdle. Um, it does seem like. Uh, even though the median residence uh is one point five million for Puerto Madera. Control seventy-five thousand dollar fee on top of that. That's discouraging for anybody. Uh, there are not that many homes to be built in Puerto Madera yet. But um.
Yeah.
Um, I I don't know what that statistic is. It can't be very many. So.
Well, it also avoids, if you don't go that direction, one of the stickier parts is is sort of what constitutes a new home. New single-family home. I mean, as Martha said, to this point, we don't count demo and remodel and rebuild as a new dwelling unit. Although our our. Oh, yeah, our, some of our other jurisdictions in Marin do, and they also charge the fee for that as well, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think we tend to agree that it's it's. It it's um, it's, it would be a big change for. A single unit.
Well, I'm all in favor of going down to the twenty percent mark. Uh, I think that that's appropriate as an encouragement. For this. And it it seems that this policy is driven also by the fact that uh HCD wants a uh effort by the town to. Um, try to encourage uh housing. Is that not fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, i- in fact. We're not subject to it, but there's even other state law that requires you to justify twenty percent if you don't currently, aren't already currently there. Um, and if you're not meeting your Reno requirements, then you have to justify going from like fifteen to twenty percent. Um. So they they, you know, it's interesting. This is speaks to that. Goldilocks of trying to figure out, right, if you're, if you have too high of a requirement, even though it opt it, you know, it may look like you're very pro affordable housing. By requiring more of a percentage for affordable housing. HCD and the, you know, the housing economists there will say, you know, that's actually. Too high, you gotta bring it down. And so that will support. Um, certainly will support um. And be in line with what our housing element, you know, with HCD wants to see at a housing element level. And it will, it will, you know, it should encourage, as we've heard from developers ourselves, and Martha's spoken to several that just. For the jaws drop when they hear twenty-five percent. Um, I just. Think that's a a deal breaker for them.
And why did I think San Francisco was more, I don't know, uh, but. This is uh headed in the right direction. I will say that that report is one of the most thorough and uh. Complete analysis of this I've seen anywhere, if you've got the. Temerity to read the entire thing. Um. It's very thorough.
You wanna? See if any members in public are.
Yeah. So. Here we are at uh H fifty-one. Uh, let's see if there are any public comments to be made for this item. Uh. See, we have um. Two hangers-on at this moment. Alex and Jana, uh, we've opened public comment, so if either one of you want to make a comment, please raise your hand. Uh, any emails into you, Tracy? No, okay.
Uh, no, churches.
So not to anybody raise their hand there, and then we'll just go ahead and close the public comment of this. And bring it back. Um, so. It's time to give Adam and Martha some concrete feedback on this, so. Um, Mr. Rizzo, do you have anything else you want to say uh to these guys about this?
No, I just think, you know, if we're going to go to twenty, you know, fifteen below just becomes a, I I think a. We have a lot of small lots, and I think that a lot of uh development could fall within that that arena, and. I think it's just going to take some special care and and thought on how um we can accomplish. Giving incentives to developers to develop some of this uh inclusionary housing, so. But I, but I do think maybe that maybe that number from one to nine probably should be fifteen if we're going to use the twenty percent mark, and then and then anything below fifteen is is. Is taken in sp- special consideration. And then if, you know, the ADU, if I I agree with um Commissioner Bundy on on the ADU on some of the new developments, and. I could, I could also see this eventually going into major. Major remodel teardowns uh being uh required, so I think definitely if if there's a, an ADU kind of um. Exception that a lot of people would would uh take that as an incentive to to build something that could be used as a, as a rental in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Phyllis.
Well, I think I made most of my comments. I do feel that it should be lowered to twenty percent. And uh, as I say, I think. If we're going to keep the one unit to call it an affordable housing fee or something else and not the in lieu of fee.
Right.
And that's just stylistic, you know, that part of it, but. I think it would be. People don't have to like it, but I think they have to accept it, and I think they would accept it more if it wasn't called an in lieu of fee. For a single-family dwelling.
Right, just call it what it is. Anything else you want to add? No, okay.
No, I've covered it.
Okay, and you, Dr. Bundy?
Uh, I support the recommendations that uh the consultants have made. Uh, I hope. They would actually result in some inclusionary housing, but. As, uh, James said, uh, some things may not pencil out, so it'll be interesting to see. As you take this back to the, the vol- the developers and other advocates for housing that are assisting with this consulting process. Uh, how? They see everything.
Yeah, I think, I think that speaks to a good point of what we actually also include in ordinance. And what we can modify by potentially resolution. Um, which is a lot easier to change if we need to adjust, um, moving forward, um. Certainly, any, we've talked about also, of course, let's put a C P I or something like that in this one, so we don't have to update the fee every time once we set it, but. There may be a little bit more flexibility in terms of modifying this, if, if things aren't working right, um. Might be, uh, a bit, just from a process standpoint. Um, that might be helpful. And I'm also hearing that maybe what we could do is put together some options for the smaller projects. So that might be, um, a couple of different. Variations, uh, that we could. You know, consider or add to commission consider when we bring this back. Or draft ordinance, um. You know, that, that may. Include sort of with or without a one unit. Require, you know, applying this to, with a, to one unit projects and not applying it to one unit projects. Something with respect to A D Us. And sort of a, something related to the different threshold, a different threshold, so which. The affordability requirement kicks in or the in lieu fee kicks in, you know. We can play with that a little bit in a smaller project.
Your, your commentary about finding that sweet spot is, uh. Appropriate, given that I've certainly seen any number of developers only too glad to pay the in lieu of fee. And skip the inclusionary housing and just go right over it and say, fine, we'll pay that fee. And we'll go ahead and build our market rate unit. So where is that number, where does it lie?
Right.
Um, that's happened on any number of medium to large developments. Uh, where they just say, gee, that's a bargain to pay the in lieu of fee.
Well, Peter, don't they just pass it on to the, uh, buyer?
They do, of course, but, you know, the market rate will support whatever they're asking, you know, um. That, or they figure out how to lower their costs sometimes.
I think that, I think the real. Thing is, you know, if you have a project. Going into construction and they're building units. That's a, for, you know, that's an affordable housing unit being built right now versus. The money going into a fund and then trying to figure out how to spend that money in an appropriate way. For the next project or what have you, it just, it's. It, it may work out, but it's certainly, you know, it's certainly in the longer, a longer term proposition about when you get the units. So, um, yeah. Um. So I, I, I thank you guys for, Peter, do you, sorry, do you have any other?
No, I just think that, um, your, uh, assessment of Jim's comment about a, uh, some way to, uh. Uh, create a, a gradient for the lower units is, uh, important, um. Those guys are on tighter budgets, um, and, um. Uh, they need some, they need some options, uh, for the smaller project. Um, as we've witnessed before, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, yeah, I mean, for example, we do have a smaller. Proposed project that we, which has seen fairly soon, um, on panel files. So, yeah, uh, we can, we can play with that a little bit, um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll come back, um.
So this is headed for the, the big leagues here shortly, um, you're gonna bring it back to us, uh, at the end of April, and then it goes to the town council. Um, this is an incredible effort that has gone forth for a long time now. Um, it's really quite significant.
Yeah, it's, it's complex stuff and it's hard, we're, we're practicing at the same time explaining it, so if you have any comments on. I appreciate Phyllis's, uh, uh, you know, comment about affordable housing fee, if there's any other comments on how, how best to. Explain it or tools we could use, follow up with us, please, because we're gonna have to. Do this again a few times, um. And it's not easy stuff to get through, it's pretty dense and. Challenging, so. Um, but I appreciate you sort of sticking with us and. And, um. Yeah, also follow up if there's other questions you think that's from between now and, and April. Work on that.
So then we'll call an end to this business item. And we'll move into reports, announcements, and requests. So, uh, commissioners, uh. Somebody has to report on the last, uh, town council meeting.
That would be me.
That would be Bob.
Yeah, so the, uh, three fifteen town council meeting, there were a couple of items that, uh, relate to the planning commission, uh, there was a discussion of the marquee board, which we approved in. Uh, two thousand seventeen or so, they've, uh, increased the hours, uh, that the messages can be displayed, and they've increased the number of messages from three to five a day. Um. And, uh, they also, I think, restricted, uh. Uh, uh, eliminated, uh, commercial announcements on it, but they still have, you know, the happy birthdays as well as the town-related, uh, announcements. Uh, they also, uh, reported from Park, this was Park and Rec, and they also reported from Park and Rec that they had a grant, uh, that they were gonna use. Uh, to construct a permanent bathroom in the park. Uh, the location, uh, hasn't been decided on yet, but, uh, there was consensus from the town council to move forward with accepting the, uh. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Or grant and to put the, uh, uh, bathroom in, uh, sort of the most logical place that, uh, they could construct it, uh. Given issues with water and, uh, sanitary sewer lines. Uh, the other, uh, item of interest that Phyllis, uh, went on, uh. Very expertly was campaign contributions limits and individual donor limits, and, uh. She presented an analysis of what is done around, uh, the Bay Area, some of the recent legislation. And the council adopted a, uh, five hundred dollar maximum individual donation for town council candidates. As well as, uh, a limit on the total, uh, campaign expenditures of five thousand dollars. Uh, but let me ask Phyllis to elaborate on that, because she is really the expert on this.
Well. You covered it pretty well, uh, what it comes down to is. The legislation, uh, A B five seventy-one in two thousand and nineteen, set a limit for an individual donation. It's actually a donation from a single donor, it could be an individual, a union, uh. Business, et cetera. And they set the same limit as they do for assembly members, which is forty-nine hundred dollars. An assembly district is approximately four hundred and sixty-five thousand residents. Corder Madera's residents are ten thousand and twenty-nine. So it makes no sense. So I had done a study, I started working on this back in October because of some. Question. Li- legal but ethically questionable. Uh, money that was spent in campaigns and donations that came in. We didn't have an election, so I'm not speaking about Corder Madera. And, um. Checked around the state, saw who had limits, saw who did not have limits. And necessarily, big cities do not have limits, uh, uh, large limits, San Francisco. Has a limit of five hundred dollars. Per an individual donation. And, uh, there are different expenditures, total expenditures for campaigns around the state. There's been a, an ordinance in Corder Madera since nine to seven, which. I don't think anybody realized, at least the candidates didn't. That the total amount spent on a campaign would be fifty percent, fifty cents. For each resident, and it works out now with the ten thousand and twenty-nine to five thousand fourteen fifty. And, uh, it was decided. That, uh, five hundred dollars would be the maximum contribution from a single donor. Todd will be bringing this back at the, uh, second meeting in April of the council for a whole new ordinance. And in checking this, I had checked towns around the state, uh, by the way, a hundred and thirteen. Uh, cities and towns in California have their own limits. And one of the best ordinances that covered all of this campaign financing around the state was, uh. Socolito, which is one of two cities in Marin that does have a limit, which is five hundred dollars. So Todd has thought, said. That we should use that as the template, it went into definitions, it's. It really covered everything. So that's essentially what will be coming for the council, uh, the other budget, just as an aside, the other. City in, um, Marin. That does have limits is Navarro, it had been four hundred dollars for several years. And now that they've gone to district elections. Which is five districts within the city of Navarro, they've decided to raise it to a thousand. Kind of seems like they're working backwards, it was rather astiric, um. I J editorial soon after they did it. So I think we're going in the right direction, I think. As, uh, Charles Lee said it very well, that in a small town like ours, campaigning is the personal inter- interaction you have with residents. Rather than spending a lot of money on. Signs, posters, mail, et cetera, so that, I think, covers it pretty well.
I have one question.
If I have a question, I'll answer it.
Is there an in lieu fee for that?
What?
Oh, he's waiting on that.
A lot of bing. Great.
I said, is there, can you, is there an in lieu fee? I can't pay, uh, forget it, no, uh, no worries, we'll, we'll move on, but.
Okay, well, Adam, um. You were, uh, uh, very well showcased this afternoon in, uh, your town council chat. But, uh, is there anything else that you would like to report on?
Um, no, just the environmental, uh, scoping meeting, uh, March thirty-first at six thirty P M. So that's the next piece of the housing element, uh, that's where we're going from, on, on that, so if there's any. Um. Things that we want the members of the public to, uh. Or members of the public, if there's anything that they would like the environmental analysis to include, that's the time to sort of, at the outset of the process, to. To sort of, uh, comment at that point. Um. No, I, I don't know, I'm still a little bit, uh. I think that's about it, um. Saw a great sunset last night, the top of Mount Tan, so I'll just. I'll put that as part of my report, that put a smile on my face, that was great. Um, and. Um, nothing, nothing else at this point, I, I guess. We, we've already talked about the seventy-eight Granada appeal will be. It will be on April fifth, I think, at the town council, so.
Is that the double one?
Yeah, um, and other than that, I think we're, um. Yeah, we're, we're sort of. Moving on. We'll try at some point, um, I think it, maybe once some of these construction projects get closer, um, we have the. Hotel and the, the, the smaller, the budgeting rebuild and Robin Drive, those are both coming out of the ground, I think. Pretty soon. So maybe we'll have a chance that later in the year to do a little tour or something. That'd be interesting. But, no, and Martha, I'll, I'll hand it to you, you have any other reports?
Uh, nothing additional.
Okay.
Now, okay. So, um, beyond that, then we have some, uh, commission meeting notes to approve. From our last meeting.
Move approval.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
I. Um, you're an I?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'm having trouble with the connection here.
You muted.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm actually having trouble with my internet connection.
Oh.
Oh, you'll have to speak to the town manager about that, I don't know.
Oh, that is a good one, um, we are gonna. The, the, um, town council is shooting for the April. Nineteenth meeting as the, as a hybrid meeting and in-person meeting and hybrid, so. Um, we will see how they do and how that goes, um, there will be a training, I believe, as well, especially for. I think Peter is the chair, you probably are, you'd be most affected by how to navigate sort of the both in-person and, and. Um, and hybrid that's going on, that may, may ask you to attend. At some time, so.
No, absolutely.
Are they gonna have like little monitors for the people that aren't there?
Uh, no, it's, uh, it's hard to even describe, I think that's why you kind of just have to see it to believe it, yeah, no, no monitors, um. Hopefully there's, I don't know, we'll see who shows up, I don't know. I mean, certainly they could, you know, hopefully all of you, um. Can show up, but I don't know how many people on the, in the public will be there, we'll, we'll have to wait and see, yes.
Uh, Adam. You may wanna check with the attorneys about this, there was a law in California that if a member of the panel. Uh. Joined the meeting, but then it was by phone. Elsewhere, wherever that person was, a hotel room, a hospital room, their own home, had to be open to the public because of the public meeting.
That was the standard round act remote, um, re- remote participation provision, yes, it's still in there.
Yeah.
Even if it's a Zoom meeting, so if, for example, like Margaret's back in New York right now, if Margaret. Joined the meeting, if we're in public at the. Quasi-city hall. And Margaret joined. You know, on the computer from Zoom, she would still have to have. I don't, you know, wherever she's staying, the door open in the hotel or whatever, that anybody could walk in and join it, and it's a horrible, horrible law.
It is, it is, it's a horrible law, there are many ancient holdovers. In state law, but yes, we had, um, a member who was attending meetings from Italy, Florence, at one point. And we had to make sure that she posted the agenda outside of her, you know, accommodations there, and. It's ridiculous, now, I, I am hoping, and, and I'm gonna go back again through eighty-three sixty-one. I know that there are some provisions for, that make things a little easier, but I'm afraid I think that the, um. That the provisions that govern ha- when and how legislative, a member of legislative body can attend remotely, I don't think those have changed. Uh.
I think that's right.
Very unfortunate.
Well, somebody ought to get the legislature to do something about it, it's. It's a bad rule, and now there is a way to do it without going through that. Ridiculous set of circumstances.
I mean, but there always was, if somebody was attending by phone, they would still be able to hear the testimony of whoever was offering comments. Uh, it never made a lot of sense.
Well, the excuse on that one that came up is, well, you wanna see the person's face and their expression when they're speaking, and, I mean. I think it's gobbledygook, but I remember when Hal Brown was very ill and eventually died. He wanted to participate in the meetings and could not, because he did not want people in his hospital room, and he didn't want them in his house while he was dying. And it's a shame because the wisdom and part, that his participation would have brought was lost.
It, it is not a good law, I, I don't disagree. But it's still on the books, but I will go through and see if there's anything, but I can't encourage you to get your hopes up.
Adam, did, did you say that the, the meeting on the nineteenth was a joint meeting or just, it was a hybrid meeting just for the, for the town council?
Yeah, sorry, hybrid, just for the town council, they're gonna do both in-person and, and, uh, video.
Okay. I thought I heard you said we'll see you there, and I, I didn't.
Oh, no, and our, so I think our first. in-person would be May tenth is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Right?
Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, really.
Well done.
Uh, very interesting and, um, shall we dare say stimulating. Okay, all right.
Good night, all.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.
All right.